Monday, July 19th, 2021, six o'clock meeting for board and commissioners. And as we normally do, I'll open the meeting with our indication and Commissioner David Wray will be there to sketch with us.
Thank you for Mr. Chairman. For those so inclined, please bow your heads with me and pray. Lord, lead us to humility and repentance. Empower those serving in government to stand up for what is right and speak truth and love. Help us to exercise our responsibilities, to speak up for righteousness and stand up against wrongdoing. Teach us how to honor and pay our debt of love towards those with whom we disagree. Keep from us hurtful speech that is unbecoming of the children of God. May no critical word leave our mouths that has not been spoken humbly before your throne as we pray fervently for those who serve in government. Finally, as we have two ears, each of us in one mouth, may we listen twice as well as we speak. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have the opportunity to recognize our employees and the service they have provided for Union County over the years. And first, with five-year service, Sabrina Firmpong. And five years, Tom Bang. Register of Deeds, Sarah Simpson with five years. James Scholler with the Sheriff's Office with five years. And William Morris, Sheriff's Office, ten years. And with fifteen years, we have Jim Chafin and Michelle Thomas with the Register of Deeds. Jim's with the Parks and Rec. With the Sheriff's Office, we have with twenty-five years, James Goodwin. And Dan Rogers, twenty-five years with the Sheriff's Office as well. In July, we had a number of retirements. Michael Livingston with the Sheriff's Office, two years. Mondo Miles, Sheriff's Office, with seventeen years. Kenza Lett with the Library, twenty-two years. And Wanda Plaller, HS Business Ops, twenty-four years. Again, we want to thank them for their service and appreciate everything they've done for us. Next, we have a public hearing, RZ 2021-001 Haynes Road.
Evening, Chairman Helms, members of the board, Manager Watson. This is a rezoning, straight rezoning without conditions along Hayes Road near Indian Trail. It's actually at the corner of Hayes and Hayes. It's this parcel right here that is to be subdivided out. It's 2.92 acres from a larger parcel. And there's no conditions associated with it. All future development would be consistent with the R40 zoning district that is requesting. It's an undeveloped piece of land, cleared currently, two-lane roads serving it. This is near Indian Trail, but not immediately adjacent to Indian Trail. It is undeveloped. Areas nearby have some industrial and large lot residential. It's near US 74. There's obviously a lot of commercial industrial development. It is relatively unaffected by environmental considerations. This aerial from a couple of years ago shows that it was forested. It's since been cleared. Wetlands or flood plain to the west. Otherwise, no significant concerns. This would be served by well and septic if, when it was permitted, Union County Public Works facilities were available, they would connect to that. Otherwise, they would be served with well and septic. It's currently zoned highway commercial, which is why it was requested for rezoning, where a house is not allowed. This is part of a larger rezoning early on in the days of zoning in Union County to the east. It's business within Union County, or I'm sorry, within Indian Trail. Transportation, two-lane road in both directions. There is a comprehensive transportation plan recommendation to line up Hayes Road with Chamber Drive along US 74. That would be as a part of future development to realign that road. Otherwise, these roads are relatively low volume. Land use plan, this is affected by a couple of different recommendations. The underlying recommendation is for mixed residential, which would take advantage of utilities and allow for a higher density residential. Because of the US 74 proximity, it is affected by the employment corridor, which would allow for a range of industrial and commercial uses. In terms of the staff report and planning board recommendations, it is inconsistent with the land use map. And having residential near commercial or industrial development could deter future development in the area. However, there's a lot of existing undeveloped land that's already zoned highway commercial in the area. There already are multiple large lot residences in the area. But Hayes Road is a two-lane, low-volume road. It's not really that appropriate for commercial or heavy industrial at this time anyway. So we felt that this is more of a transitional use, and therefore, we recommended approval. Planning Board at its meeting also unanimously recommended approval. And so we're requesting a public hearing for this action tonight. I believe we at least have a representative of the property owner present. I'm not sure if any other people spoke up to speak about this rezoning, but in advance of that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Wray.
I would like to ask planning to do something for us. I remember in the early days of rezoning, I noticed this gentleman, I believe, had to pay $400 application fee.
That's correct.
Used to, and I'd like for you to get some information together and get back to us as quick as you can, maybe the next meeting. Used to, Union County allowed you to build anything, if it was zoned highway commercial, you could build highway commercial or anything less than that. And I just hate to see somebody have to spend money to build something on their own land. It just, I don't think we're doing the public a favor by doing that. Now, I do realize, one of the negatives was it would be a residence among other highway commercial, but I think the people are aware that's building this house, that, you know, there might be some commercial built near them. They just want to live there. So would you find out what it would take? And I hadn't talked to any other board members about this, but it just seems like to me, this is a hurdle that, and a $400 hurdle in time, that we put in the way of some of the people that might be better removed.
Well, I'll open the public hearing, and we have one young lady that online signed up, and it's Linda Taylor. If you'd like to come and address the...
Thank you for accepting my plea to speak to you and appreciate everything that you do for all of Union County and for the folks here. My name is Linda Hayes Taylor. I am a resident, have lived there on Hayes Road most all of my entire life. I am familiar with the property that is adjacent to some property that I own jointly with my two sisters. We have no reason to speak unfavorably about this residence going up. We know, we are related to the family, and we would be happy to have them as a neighbor. There's been very little building on Hayes Road over the years as far as residential. That probably is due to the HC overlay for that property. But these people want to live next to their parents and their grandmother, and I see that that would be a very big asset for that family. So my say to you tonight is I hope that you will give a favorable opinion and pass this approval for this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we had some individuals sign up on informal comments, but they live on Hayes Road and they want to talk about rezoning. And you can't talk about rezoning on informal comments, so would you like to come? Susan Stokes, would you like to come and speak?
I am Susan Stokes, and I've lived on Hayes Road all my life. That land has been in our family well over 200 years. And when I got married, my granddaddy wanted me to stay at home. So he gave me land to build a home on. And I raised my daughter, and I would like for her to stay at home and build beside me. And because we're all one big happy family on Hayes Road, and we just want to stay together. And my husband and I did not know that our land was zoned highway corridor until we started checking into this. And we own, as you could see, the land across from the old barn. And like Linda said, she owns the land that kind of butts up to it, and then we own everything around it. So I don't think, you know, something commercial is going to come in there because we own all that already. So I would just thank you if you would please pass this and let my daughter and grandson and son-in-law build and be happy and be near us.
Thank you, ma'am.
It's a small world, Susan. Your mama was Josie Hayes. My cousin was Joey Fur.
Oh, my goodness. Joe, I grew up with Joey. Oh, my. My mother is still living. She is 92. She lives in front of me. And more than anything in this world, she wanted to come tonight because she wanted to speak and say, please let my granddaughter build close to me and let me live to see that house get built.
Well, I wish she had come because I have often wondered about her when I have memories of the Harkey store and the furs.
Yes.
Good to see you.
Well, it's my world. Good to see you.
Thank you for coming, ma'am. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Please pass it.
There's another gentleman named Roger Haynes. Haynes Road, is this what you'd like, you'd like to speak on?
I would.
Okay.
And it's Roger Hayes. Not Haynes. Again, my name is Roger Hayes. I live at 2515 Hayes Road. It's actually Monroe, North Carolina, but I'm a domicile in the town of Indian Trail. The parcel number is 0706-9011. It's 72 acres. That's the, at least the exit on the Hayes Road is adjoining this lot in question. I see there's no impact on the county other than it increases the tax base. I have lived there for a long time and realize things are changing. This property, one of these days, is going to be commercial. Eventually, that road, Hayes Road, that goes across from Highway Old Monroe to Highway 74, especially if you realign it, is going to be a very attractive place. But so what? That might be 10 years from now. And if a developer wants to come in and buy all their property, the Stokes's property, then fine. But in the meantime, Susan and her children and grandchildren will be able to live there happily. Josie will be able to see her grandchildren grow up right across the street. And so with my 72 acres, I have absolutely no objection and support this, your proposed action here with all my heart and soul. And Vice Chairman Wray, thank you so much for pointing out that, hey, if you own some land, at least if it's zoned from the highway corridor down, you ought to pretty much be able to do what you want to with it within the overall county plan. At any rate, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that...
I was just told, I'm sorry. If at all possible, could this be voted on tonight so that we can get a building permit tomorrow? If we can do this. Thank you.
Richard, is that, suspend rules to be able to add?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, that was a quick question. So I'm a little bit confused with the, if we approve the rezoning tonight and the $400, tell me, is that something that staff's going to come back to us with? Or is that part of the, you get, do you understand where the confusion is? What's going to happen if we...
You're going to amend your zoning order to move that. I think that's the question you're asking. You cannot do that here. Maybe that's where that...
Okay. So if we approve the rezoning tonight, the $400 is part of, is that, everybody's good with that?
Okay. Anything else? Okay. I'll make a motion. We amend our policies and allow to move this to 37A to discuss tonight. All in favor? Okay. Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing. Confidential company, Project Blue, to consider a Step Four Magnet 100 Economic Development Incentive Grant in the amount not to exceed $1,700,000 paid over 14 years.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask permission from the board to be recused from this discussion.
And we have, any objections to Mr. Simpson being recused? Okay. All in favor? Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Excellent. Chairman Helms, Commissioners, Manager Watson, I am very excited to bring before you tonight an economic development incentive grant request for Collins Aerospace, otherwise known as Project Blue. Let me start out tonight with a little bit of background. The Union County follows the general set of guidelines for incentives when recruiting new firms and helping our existing industries expand within the county. Every project is unique, and there are occasions when the capital investment strategy of that company requires us to modify the guidelines to successfully win that investment. Some examples of those items that could alter our strategies would be a phased investments over a period of time, overall amount of the investment. The company may belong to a specific targeted industry that we are trying to really recruit into the county. Or it could be the speed of depreciation of certain assets, like in a data center. Again, every project is unique, and any one of these projects could affect our strategy on how we ensure Union County has the highest chance of success and we can bring that project to our community. Over the last two years, we have been discussing corporate investment strategy with several companies in an attempt to craft options to increase our ability to lure these projects. One result of those discussions was the new incentive concept that we are creating to have a better competitive advantage for our community for companies of certain characteristics. Some of those characteristics are companies that have a larger domestic or global footprint within overall multiple facilities in which they can move capital freely between these or have consolidations. And so we want to be the recipient of those consolidations or other movements of capital. Companies that provide several products to the market, where each one has its own opportunity for investment. Companies with research and development programs that, when things come out of an R&amp;D program or come out of a university and goes to full production, we want to be able to capture that. Even new companies that are looking to establish a new location, but they could have several years of investments over a five- or 10-year window. Companies like this typically have a strategic plan for their investments related to the enhanced capabilities or new facilities that they would need, but the scope of the financial details around those investments, sort of their line of sight, can be unclear for a variety of reasons. Could be new technologies, inflation of materials, interest rates, global, or excuse me, government legislation, even changes in market trends. As a result, to best position Union County, we have developed the Magnet 100 Grant. Magnet 100 is designed to serve these niche projects that we've been talking about so far. The economic development incentive, this, it is an economic development incentive that creates what we are calling a competitive gravity for our county that these other locations a company may be considering do not have. This competitive gravity is creating, is created by incentivizing investments the company has at their, on their horizon that have a definitive range of capital, but they may not know the exact details of that scope, the final scope of the projects that they are considering. Still could be engineered, they could be having machinery actually made specifically for this product, all kinds of reasons. It could be R&amp;D projects that, again, as we've mentioned, are looking for a home as they're scaling up to full production, or even projects that need to move extremely quick to serve their market. Another benefit for the company is the Magnet 100 makes it very easy for the company to administer their investment obligations to the county versus a series of overlapping investment contracts. And of course, we want to be that place that is seen to be the most business-friendly. So how is it constructed? While creating the competitive advantage over our rivals, this Magnet 100 is actually very simple. We are basically taking, taking our existing Step Four Grant that basically, that looks at one investment, one project, and applies a five-year incentive to that project. But as a result, we're actually stacking those together over a 10-year window. So the result is the Magnet 100 Grant recognizes 10 years of investment, again, what we're calling the investment window, and then administers an incentive payment series over 14 years. And again, because they're five-year grants for each one of those years. This is also a performance-based grant where the company must meet certain thresholds to stay within the program. They must meet all of their investment obligations and be in good standing with the county in all areas prior to receiving any grant dollars. To qualify, the company must meet some considerable investment thresholds. In the first three years, they must have invested $30 million. By year seven, the investment must have met or surpassed $50 million. And what we are trying to capture over the 10-year window is up to, but no greater than, $100 million, again, over the 10-year window. If the company does not meet the first threshold for whatever reason, but has exceeded the minimum investment under the current guidelines, they would revert back to the standard five-year grant for the appropriate step that they have qualified for. For example, if the company only achieves a $25 million, they would fall back to a Step Three Grant and the associated grant factor, and they would only receive that grant, those grant payments for five years. If the company has achieved the $30 million mark by year three, but has not met the second threshold of the $50 million by year seven, they would then have received their five years of incentive payments to that point, and the grant would terminate at that time. Again, only showing the exposed incentive grant payments that we would have for a standard grant anyway. So it's, again, only a five-year grant if they missed the $50 million. So by having these built-in thresholds, it also encourages the company to continue investing if they see that they are falling short, that they would migrate more investment here in Union County versus other locations so that they can maximize the benefit. Therefore, again, the name called Magnet. Finally, the real beauty of the Magnet 100 is it generates a higher return on investment for the county than our standard grant, due to the costs associated with the project remaining relatively constant, but yet the investment continually increases and compounds on itself. So given this background and the explanation of the Magnet 100 Grant, I'm happy to share with you the details of Project Blue for Collins Aerospace. The company is a leader in aerospace globally and supplies a wide variety of products to every, every commercial aircraft and many military platforms. Since 2004, they have been a cornerstone company of our aerospace cluster. The company's Monroe location has been a hub of their North American maintenance, repair, and overhaul operation, or what we call MRO. In that, again, that work is done for commercial and military aircraft at that location. So they have seen continuous success in our community and, as a result, made significant investments over these 16 years. They have just completed and announced the most recent project, the one that you had incentivized several years ago called Project Crestone. That was a $30 million investment in this community. Tonight, Collins is bringing forth a potential project that could further solidify Monroe and Union County as the center of excellence for their company. The investment could entail several projects over the next decade that will consist of expanding existing capabilities and broadening their offerings of aerospace products. Therefore, the company is considering a series of investments that would qualify for the Magnet 100 with an initial capital investment of $30 million over the next three years, beginning in this year, 2021. The investment associated with the project would all be placed entirely within Union County. The capital investment, again, would initially be $30 million, and the job creation could be as high as 50 new full-time employees, although they are only committing to retaining their current employment level as the condition of the incentive. As mentioned earlier, our office and the company have been discussing the scenario periodically with them since 2019. As part of the company's due diligence, they have indicated that incentives are a very important part of the project and where its ultimate location will be, and any final decision would not occur until after this public hearing tonight. Last week, the Monroe City Council passed a similar Magnet 100 Grant under their incentive program. So finally, this is a competitive situation between Union County and other locations within the company in North America. So tonight, we are requesting for your consideration a Step Four Magnet 100 Economic Development Incentive Grant in an amount not to exceed $1,700,000 over the next 14 years, based upon the Union County Tax Office's appraised value each year with the company's anticipated investment of at least $30 million in building improvements, machinery, and equipment. Based on this investment and the anticipated depreciation, while holding all other factors constant, the company would pay an estimated ad valorem tax on the investment of approximately $3.2 million over the same 14-year period. Actual tax revenue to the county will be based on the current annual tax rate applied to the assessed value of the investment each year after depreciation. As you're aware, we do perform that cost-benefit analysis on every project. And looking at this, the average that we typically bring to you is around two to three to one. This project has a, for the grant period, the 14 years, 6.19 to one. So a tremendous increase. And if you look over the life of the project, nearly 11 to one. So it's 10.59 to one for that project. The Monroe, Union County Economic Development Board reviewed the Project Blue last week at their July 13th meeting, where they supported us presenting this opportunity to you tonight for your consideration. As I mentioned earlier, the project has already been brought before the Monroe City Council and received a unanimous decision in favor of their Magnet 100. Therefore, the Monroe Union County Economic Development Board of Advisors and Staff requests the award of a Step Four Magnet 100 Performance-Based Economic Development Grant to Collins Aerospace and specifically to a subsidiary company, Goodrich, in the amount not to exceed $1.7 million to help secure this 30-plus million dollar investment. I'd also request that the incentive contract be drawn up by the county legal team and the Commissioners' Grand Authority, the Manager Watson, to execute these documents. Please let me now introduce to you Ms. Mary Distaffan and Tom Shree of Collins Aerospace here, and they're available to answer any questions that you may have. Otherwise, thank you so much. Otherwise, thank you so much. Any questions?
No, I think we're okay, and we appreciate you all being here and what you do for our community. Thank you very much. I'm going to open the public hearing. I've had nobody sign up. Is there somebody that wanted to speak that didn't find a sign-up log? In that case, I will close the public hearing. Next, we have a public hearing regarding an ordinance ordering the removal or demolition of a structure at 2101 White Store Road, Monroe, North Carolina. You getting jaded? Wait just a minute and let Commissioner Simpson join us.
Thank you, Tracy.
Mark? Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, Mr. Manager, Board of Commissioners, staff. My name is Mark Griffin. I'm Director of Union County Building Code Enforcement. With me is Ms. Tracy Colley, Director of Union County Environmental Health. We're here tonight to brief the board concerning ongoing violations at 2101 White Store Road and to recommend the adoption of an ordinance to demolish and remove the structure at that location. We don't take this decision lightly, nor did we arrive at it quickly. We have spent years working with the property owner, seeking resolution to no avail. The property owner has been given every opportunity to comply with environmental health regulations as well as building code rules. Ms. Colley and I have the responsibility to enforce these codes. Furthermore, as Building Code Enforcement Director, I am mandated by general statute to condemn any property that is deemed especially dangerous to life and health because of its condition. We now have a brief presentation to outline the conditions at this property.
Good evening. As Mark said, I'm Tracy Colley with Environmental Health, and I'm going to talk about the background with the property and also provide a timeline of enforcement actions for 2101 White Store Road in Monroe between 2015 and 2021. This property is located centrally in Union County, just outside the city of Monroe. It's just over half an acre. The original structure was built in 1962, so it's about 60 years old, and it's served by a well and an onsite wastewater disposal system. The type of septic system is a pump-and-hall system. After multiple repairs were performed on the system, a licensed soil scientist with the Onsite Water Protection Branch deemed the property non-reparable in 2009. In 2011, a pump-and-hall permit was issued for the property. There is no drain field onsite. This is a timeline of primary events that occurred at the property. This doesn't include all actions, just the primary actions that took place, beginning with October 22, 2015, and concluding with May 11, 2021. On October 22, 2015, Environmental Health received a complaint. It stated that the owner was pumping wastewater out of their tanks onto the ground, and the wastewater was flowing into the ditch along White Store Road. These are photos taken on that date. On October 26, 2015, a notice of violation was issued, asking for them to immediately cease the discharge of wastewater to the ground surface and bring the onsite wastewater system into compliance with the pump-and-hall authorization. Situations such as these are a serious impact to public health and the environment due to the improper wastewater disposal. When Environmental Health is involved in enforcement actions such as these, our immediate focus is abatement of the public health and environmental hazards. And in this case, that's, of course, eliminating the discharge of untreated wastewater to the ground. Because of the human impact, the contamination of groundwater and surface water supplies, vector harborage, odor, not to mention the effect on the community and the neighbors and the impact to the quality of life. At that, next, we would address the cause of the issue and also the corrective action. Those actions include remedies such as, obviously, voluntary compliance, we always start there, inspections, notice of violations, permit actions, abatement orders, and court actions, including injunctions, temporary restraining orders, and et cetera. Inspections were performed by Environmental Health, beginning on October 29, 2015, when fluorescing dye was placed inside the tanks to trace, if necessary, any wastewater discharge. Inspections also occurred through November and December in 2015, and then again on February 22, 2016. On August 31, 2016, an inspection was performed at the property. At the time of that inspection, a clean-out was observed open on the right side of the residence, and it's shown on the picture with an arrow. All three tanks were full, and the visible alarm was activated. Building Code Enforcement was notified of the inspection results, and they were provided with photos. This is a picture of the wastewater that was discharged onto the ground at the right of the house, raw sewage. On September 21, 2016, and November 18, 2016, inspections were conducted by Environmental Health. The clean-out cap was in place at both those inspections. However, the system was still not in compliance with the pump-and-hall authorization. On November 29, 2016, another inspection was conducted. The ditch along White Store Road was full of water. The clean-out cap was again removed, as you see in the picture. The Environmental Health Specialist conducting the inspection requested that the owner replace the cap, and he complied. On January 6, 2017, an order of abatement was issued, and then on January 12, we received a receipt for the pumping of one tank from the property owner. On April 3, an inspection of the onsite system was conducted, and then on April 4, another notice of violation was issued for noncompliance with the pump-and-hall authorization. On June 14, 2017, another inspection was conducted by Environmental Health. At this time, this was the closest the system would come to compliance. The contractor was present, they had contracts in place, the risers were present, they had a high-water alarm, and the telemetry device was installed. Then, we were unable to activate the high-water alarm or the telemetry device because the power supply was not functional. The owner stated that he would contact an electrician to correct the problem. The inspection failed, and the operations permit could not be issued. On October 1, 2018, we received another complaint, that solid waste was accumulating on the property and wastewater was again being discharged in the backyard. Also, the complaint stated there were a large number of people in the home. On October 8, a site visit was conducted. We did not have access to the property, so the property was viewed from Archie Lane and White Store Road. We were unable to substantiate the wastewater discharge because it was in the backyard. We did, however, substantiate the solid waste violation, and notices of violation were issued on October 8 and November 19 of 2018. On February 14, 2019, an inspection warrant was obtained and executed. These are pictures of what was seen upon arrival in the backyard. This was not viewable from the road along Archie Lane or White Store Road. You can see there's a fence there. This is what we saw when we arrived. So, it's two more pictures of the rear yard, the rear of the house, the elevated storage fuel tank. You'll notice on the right, there are mattresses there. They're sitting on top of a burn pile, so burning was being done in the backyard also. This is the left side and rear of the property. Children's toys are present in the right-side photo. As we walked into the backyard, you'll notice on the left side, those are the risers on the tanks. Adjacent to the riser, a sump pump was laying on the ground, and it was connected to a hose, and that's shown on the right side. And the hose extended into the backyard and along the rear right of the property. And you'll see that the hose connects and then is discharging into a ditch that's been created due to the volume of wastewater that was discharged onto the ground. This is the right side of the property, and then wastewater on the ground again. On February 15, 2019, an order of abatement was issued to immediately cease the discharge of wastewater onto the ground and remove and properly dispose of the solid waste. Building Code Enforcement was notified that there is no approved onsite wastewater system at that property.
After being notified by Environmental Health of the continued violations as well as a lack of an approved wastewater disposal system, I notified the property owners with my intent to disconnect electrical service to the structure. After ample time had passed, I notified the serving utility to remove power from the house. Shortly thereafter, a portable generator appeared onsite. That generator was being used to supply electricity to the well as well as to the interior of the structure. On October 18 of 2019, a condemnation hearing was held. Union County staff was present, as well as the property owners and their legal counsel. On October 25, 2019, I notified the property owners that it had been determined that the structure was a safety hazard because of its condition, and that it had risen to a level of being especially dangerous to life and health. There's another picture of the back roof showing deterioration. As such, the property owners were given until December 31 of 2019 in order to avoid condemnation by doing one of the following. They could rebuild the structure, repair it to abate the safety concerns. They could vacate and secure the structure in such a way that it was no longer readily accessible, or that they could demolish the structure. The owners failed to comply, the dwelling continued to be occupied, no repairs were made.
On January 20, 2020, another solid waste complaint follow-up visit was conducted, and this is what was viewed from the perimeter of the property. On July 23, 2020, Environmental Health received another complaint, and then another inspection warrant was obtained and executed by Environmental Health. At the time of the inspection, the house appeared to be occupied with a generator running, and there were four to five cars in the driveway and street. Solid waste was accumulating on the property and strewn around. An open-top dumpster was present, however, it was overflowing with garbage and solid waste. Notices of violation were issued on July 28, 2020, and September 15, 2020. On March 8, 2021, this property was sold to a third party in a taxable foreclosure. On March 22, 2021, the Evans remitted funds to buy the property out of foreclosure during the overbid period. On May 11, 2021, a final inspection warrant was obtained and executed. A generator was present, connected to electrical cords. The property remained in persistent noncompliance with the Union County Ordinance for Solid Waste Management, and again, no approved onsite wastewater disposal system was present as required by law. Simultaneous to our actions that we were taking with the property, court actions were also being followed through on in 2015, 2016, 2017, 2018, and 2019. In an effort to assist the property owners, Environmental Health took the additional steps of contacting contractors on the owner's behalf to discuss permitting and maintenance requirements. We researched low and no-interest loan and grant options to assist with the cost. We worked with their court-appointed attorney. We contacted the city of Monroe multiple times on the owner's behalf to determine if public sewer was accessible. We assisted the owner with the evaluation of an adjacent parcel for a possible easement to place an onsite wastewater disposal system. The current status of 2101 White Store Road in Monroe is that there is no approved onsite wastewater disposal system as required by the North Carolina rules governing sewage treatment and disposal systems and the North Carolina Building Code. There's a history of violations for discharging wastewater to the ground surface. It's presently in violation of the Union County Ordinance for Solid Waste Management. The power to the property has been disconnected since February 2019, over two years ago. The structure has been condemned by Union County Building Code Enforcement for almost two years. A generator is onsite and used to power the well. The dwelling is occupied despite condemnation.
In closing, we're fortunate that we reside in a state that has robust building codes and public health regulations. These codes are designed not just to protect the property owner, but the adjacent property owners, neighbors, and the general public. When these codes are ignored and not enforced, public health, public safety suffer. There are remedies in place, however, to address properties that are deemed especially dangerous to life and health because of their defective construction, perhaps unsafe wiring, or in this case, a non-functioning wastewater disposal system. As such, this property has been condemned. This property remains condemned, and it cannot be legally operated. Yet, there is a generator onsite. The solid waste continues to accumulate. We respectfully ask that the board approve this ordinance so that this public health hazard can be eliminated. Do you have any questions that Ms. Colley or myself might answer?
Any questions?
What is vector harborage? I saw that term earlier.
That's insects and rodents and their breeding sites. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. No questions?
Thank you.
I'll move that we suspend our rules. Oh, yeah, public hearing. I'm sorry. There was a lot to go in, but we have, Mr. Evans, I assume you wanted to speak on this property and not on informal comments? Come on. I'll open the public hearing.
Thank you for having me today. Yeah, we have...
Can you state your name, please, sir, where you reside?
My name is Alex Evans, and I reside at 2101 White Store Road. But right now, I'm not living there. I'm living at 4015 Payton Highway. Yeah, they have gave us opportunities, you know, to get things right. I was younger, but I'm trying. I've been trying. I came up with the, we had to pay $20,000 altogether from August 2020... twenty-twenty to April, March and April, we had to come up with twenty thousand. So I, I came up with that, working hard, trying, you know, trying my best. I got kids I gotta take care of, um, but yeah, they, they gave us plenty of opportunities. I'm not, and I'm, I'm trying to get more time. I'm not, you know, come up here to beg or, or nothing, but I, I do need more time. I do got pictures to show that the trash has been cleaned up and, um, nobody other right now is standing there. We do have a generator, but there's nobody standing there right now. Um, but I do have pictures to show that we have been cleaning up and, um, I'm just trying, I'm young, working, black man, just trying to have, you know, my daddy left that for us. Um, he passed away. I'm just trying, man, that's all. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who wants to speak on this property? With no further speakers, we will close the public hearing. And next, uh, I ask that we suspend the rules and move items, uh, ordinance for removal and demolition to item six and, uh, item, uh, the rezoning for Haynes will move it to six A and six B will move the, uh, project blue for discussion. And that way you won't have to sit through the whole meeting. So, uh, I have a motion. Any discussion? Any home favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Well, then we will, uh, take item six, which is the ordinance for removal or demolition of the property. Yes?
So, uh, you have in front of you the, the ordinance for the demolition. Staff is asking that, um, you do, uh, in fact, um, take that action. There's a second item with that which allows us to take any other actions necessary. Um, I, I certainly understand, uh, Mr. Evans' plea. I, I do want the board to know that we have done all that we believe we can do to try and bring this into compliance. Um, there is a point at which sometimes government action is necessary. Uh, we would ask that the board consider this action even though we know it is heavy-handed. Um, the neighbors also have some rights as well. That would be our, our take on it.
Okay. All right. Any discussion? Okay, you want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Do I need to read the whole, the whole thing? Now, there for it, there is, um, an ord-
Read, read the whole ordinance?
You're right. Do I need it?
Not just the motion, it's part of the hundred, like, data Jedi.
Okay. Motion to, um, pass the ordinance ordering the removal or demolition of the structure at twenty-one oh one White Store Road in Monroe, North Carolina.
Okay. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
And, and I'm certainly sympathetic to the family, but there are cases where sometimes you just throw good money after bad, and that seems to be what's going on here. And I, and I appreciate your, uh, willingness to step forward for your family, but, you know, when there's children involved and, and the danger to it, the fire hazards and other things and, and, you know, I honestly, I, I honestly believe we're helping you, not hurting you. Um, the, the cost of repair this, the cost to fix the whole issue and then maintain it, um, is going to be burdensome. Um, and, and I, I truly believe in this motion. I'm, I'm helping you, I'm not hurting you. So.
Commissioners, I, uh, I have some documentation that we need to enhance our motion, so I'll, uh, ask that you entertain an update and I'd like to read it. Adopt the ordinance ordering the removal or demolition of the structure at two, twenty-one oh one White Store Road, Monroe, North Carolina. The ordinance and authorize the county manager to take necessary actions, including without limitation, to negotiate and execute contracts or initiate legal proceedings to effect the purpose of this ordinance. Any further discussions? Okay. Sir?
Commissioner, I should read it separately.
Yes. Okay. No further questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have, uh, rezoning of Haynes Road.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the rezoning of RZ twenty-two-one oh one Hayes Road from Highway Commercial to R forty.
Okay. I have a motion. Any discussion? Home in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have, um, Project Blue and, uh-
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd ask you to, uh, board with recuse.
Okay, I'm told that I should have included a consistency statement with the Hayes Road rezoning, so with that addition, motion to accept. Home in favor? Okay, Jerry, you-
Need to take a vote on it?
Ah, yeah, we, vote to allow Jerry to be excused from Project Blue. Okay. Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion that we adopt, adoption of an ordinance ordering, no, that's the wrong one, that's one down. Prove a step four magnet one hundred economic development incentive grant to confidential company Project Blue in the amount not to exceed one million seven hundred thousand, paid over a fourteen-year period and authorize the county manager to approve an incentive grant agreement with the company pending legal review. Any discussion? Stoney?
Do we, do we need to name the company now or?
I think it was named during the presentation.
Yeah, but I mean, in the most-
Collins.
Yeah. Long-term partner with Union County, we appreciate it. Um, so we have a motion to approve it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Now, I don't, we got one informal comment, yeah. Was all of them gone? I think we took care of all of them, didn't we? No, I do, sir. These are ones from Hayes. All right. All right, uh, informal comments. Each speaker must address the board from the lectern and begin their remarks by giving their name, stating whether they are residents of Union County, indicating the municipality within which they reside, if any, and stating the topic about which they intend to speak. Each speaker will have three minutes to make remarks. A speaker may not yield his or her time to another speaker. Speakers may not discuss matters which are subject to public hearings and another, and they must be courteous in their language and presentation. Restatements or repetitive comments by the same speaker, whether it's same or separate meetings, may be ruled out of order and terminated by the chair. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Speakers may leave written comments and/or supporting documentation, if any, with the Assistant County Manager seated to your right. Okay. And this is- Where's that? Where's that list? No, that's what I'm looking for. All right. The first one that, uh, signed up is Brian Helms.
Hey, good evening.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Brian Helms. Thanks for allowing me to speak tonight. Um, a few weeks ago, this board, uh, I do live in Union County, by the way. A few weeks ago, this board voted to increase taxes above revenue neutral. The voters in Union County deserve to be aware of how this increase will affect them. Although this board voted to decrease the tax rate under the premise of future development, property values were reassessed and skyrocketed. For residents of Union County that brought new homes, or they bought new homes in the past year, this will likely have little impact to the fact that their home was recently appraised. However, what about the long-term residents of this county that bought their home twenty or thirty years ago? Is people like the lady from Helms Park that addressed this board recently that will bear the full assault of this increase and will contribute to the three point six million dollars to the county? Now, what's, what's going to happen with the Biden bubble burst? Well, we've been there before. Remember two thousand eight, two thousand nine, when tax values were drastically higher than market value? How did that work out? Make no mistake, guys, we're in the time of crisis in Union County. The future development of, uh, the future development that the tax increases were based on will cease due to capacity limits on sewer. So who's going to pay for it? Will you attempt to put that burden on our backs too? You've already raised the rates for water thirty-three percent. How much higher are we going to go? Fifty percent? Or will you stand up and defend residents and put that back on the developers? Many of you on this board have boasted that the funds from increased taxes will go to schools and to hire additional deputies, but how many new positions are being created within UCPs? The answer is one. How many new positions are being created in the county? The answer is at least twenty-five, and only four of those are deputies. Where's the rest of that money going? Now, what about the redesign of the logo for Union County? This would have been a great opportunity for the students at CADA. How much money do we spend there? You guys chose to be wasteful with our tax dollars. We need to make better use of our resources and stop wasteful spending. You're writing tax, uh, you're writing checks that the taxpayers pay. Union County's been given forty-six million through federal stimulus through ARPA. This is not counting the money allocated to towns. Not all residents have access to water today, but yet a newly formed committee is looking at spending this money on low-income housing that will need the sewer that we don't have. Is this by coincidence? Who appointed this committee? What are their qualifications? You were elected to serve the best interest of the taxpayers of Union County. Many of you ran under the promise of not increasing taxes and you have failed in that promise. You have failed folks like the lady from Helms Park in favor of, I don't know. You have failed to keep the campaign promises of small government and limited spending as well. I urge you guys, remember, you're not elected to sit on a perch. You're elected to serve. It's time to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Trish Ryan. Okay, after that is Richard Don.
Good evening, Richard Don. I'm a resident of Waxhaw, Union County. As I've heard statements from certain county commissioners and seen the recent news about wastewater plants reaching capacity, I'm sensing that there might be a grow-at-all-cost mentality. Existing construction plans are being put on hold because of the wastewater capacity problem, uh, was increased wastewater need not planned for. And knowing that the North Carolina General Assembly blocks municipalities from levying impact fees on developers, surely it was known in advance that ratepayers would eventually be asked to foot the bill. Population growth has many benefits, but it is not an unlimited positive. At some point, quality of life will decline. A wise community knows when to stop growing. Your own words seem to imply this when you said that taxes must inevitably go up when more people move into the county. Are new people not self-sustaining? If they're paying the same tax rate as the rest of us, why wouldn't that cover the increased need for infrastructure? And with many millions of federal dollars pouring in, why are we facing the prospect of higher local taxes and increased rates? Surely, existing residents should be the priority for the B O C C. Shouldn't existing infrastructure needs be addressed before adding more? Last year, I moved here to escape the mismanagement, corruption, and high taxes of New Jersey. I do not want Union County to go down the same path. Many of you were born here, but I specifically chose Union County based on its supposed conservative leanings. It's very easy to raise taxes and rates, but very difficult to maintain or even cut them. Your constituents voted for you in the hope that you would keep government growth in check, be fiscally conservative, and be good stewards of the county. I ask that you do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Jessica Cook.
My name is Jessica Cook and I live in unincorporated Union County, and tonight I wanted to talk to you about taxes and schools. Um, I'm coming to you tonight to express my disappointment in the new tax increase. It's especially concerning when it comes during the same time as our property reeval, uh, property reevaluation year. After the tax increase was approved four to one, I listened to the explanation that it was going towards UCPs schools, South Piedmont Community College, and the hiring of four additional deputies. Well, who would argue with that? No one would be opposed to that type of funding. But as I did more research, I found out that there's more to the story. This county actually has a budget surplus. The county has a reserve of twenty percent and it's required to only have a reserve of eight percent. Plus, in the coming years, the county will receive around forty-six point five million dollars in stimulus money from the federal government, and I got that from treasury.gov. There's even a third possible paycheck coming to Union County from an opioid settlement. So again, if we have a budget surplus and a huge federal stimulus coming, why have you raised taxes on the citizens of Union County? There seems to be a spending problem here. The second thing I want to bring to your attention is that our school district, UCPs, does not provide any students with textbooks. Doesn't that seem strange to you? They actually did away with paper-bound textbooks years ago and moved to digital textbooks. But the thing is, very, not very many teachers even use those textbooks. Instead, our children, and possibly your children and grandchildren, are learning off sheets of paper that are printed off the internet all day long. How can we be, be providing our children here in Union County with an excellent education without textbooks? How can the students get a consistent and equal education across school clusters if teachers bring their own curriculum into the class from what they print off the internet? I'm sorry, but a school without textbooks is no school at all. So why am I bringing this to your attention? Because next month, I'll be speaking at the school board meeting on August third, and I'll be asking them to reinstate paper-bound textbooks back into our school system, but I'm anticipating that they will say they don't have the money for it. After all, the school board asked you for eight point one million dollars, but you gave them around five point five million. That's a thirty-two percent cut from what they asked for, and UCPs is currently dead last in state funding. They're number one hundred and sixteen out of one hundred and sixteen in school districts. Yet let me say this again, this county has a budget surplus, you raised our taxes, and you're about to receive a huge stimulus payment. Why did you not fully fund our schools? So I'm asking you tonight to reconsider and rescind the tax increase, cut spending in other areas other than our schools, and most importantly, if the school board comes back and asks you for more money for textbooks, I hope that you'll overwhelmingly approve that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. I think that's the last one.
So, as looking in the, looking at the numbers and looking at it from every angle, it just seems, what I'm seeing is there's a ton of money that's pouring into Union County from all kinds of angles. We've got the federal stimulus money coming in, property tax increases coming in, water rate, I mean, yeah, the water rate increase that is going in. And I could only imagine that, you know, there was quite a sales tax increase last year because of, you know, the COVID pandemic. Everybody's staying home. People are actually going out and shopping in their local community. People were shopping in Union County, and more people were spending money here. So, I can just, all I'm seeing is money just pouring into this county. And I'm not seeing where it's going to, where is all of this money going? What is being done with it? How is this increasing our quality of life? Our cost of living here is going up regularly, but the quality of life is not going up. There's, there needs to be a system of checks and balances. We need to not spend money, you know, as previously stated, on developing a new logo for the county. If there's, you know, so much going on that we need to make budget cuts places that it needs to be made, which I don't even understand to begin with, but if there's so much that's coming in, and we're cutting budgets that need to be spent, why are we, why are we making those cuts? That's just, that's my only question is, you know, where can we make cuts so that we don't have to put the burden of the taxes on the taxpayers? Because, you know, as our property values have gone up, yes, thank you very much, you lowered the tax, the county tax rate, but at the end of the day, the check that we write is going to be a larger check. So, at the end of the day, the taxes went up. If that was going up, as stated, for the schools or for, you know, community safety through the deputy sheriffs, then that's one thing. But then, when you actually look at the numbers and you see that that wasn't the entire story, that so many other positions are being created, it's just, we need to get back to fiscal responsibility. We need to tax less, spend less, and make budget cuts. So, I just ask that you do a full review of that and try to, try to save us taxpayers some money. We can't handle too much more. It's, we're coming off the end of the pandemic as well, so try to help us out, please.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks.
Next, we have additions, deletions, and adoption of the agenda. And I'd like to add item number 44, a discussion regarding social media posts referring to fellow, fellow elected officials drowning in debt. Any further? Okay, we have a mo, have a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. Next, with number 36, comprehensive water and sewer master plan, population growth projections.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Board of County Commissioners, Manager, and rest of the staff. This item before you is item 36. It's really a follow-up to the workshop that was done on July 7 by Jay Fulmer from Brown and Caldwell. He is the, that is the engineer in charge of the master planning project for the county. And he presented to you basically two population projections, which basically, which is built around the CRTPO numbers and then augmented with the planning data from some of the towns that, that use our water. And this agenda item asks that you adopt one of those, you know, the recommendation from staff that we use the augmented numbers as the basis for planning for the water system for the next 20 years. I just want you to know that these are planning numbers and not, and we're not making, we're not sticking a claim out to 2040 and saying, this is what the population in the county will be in 2040. It's just to give us enough data so that we can start developing some hydraulic models, some flow projections, and start looking at what the system might need over the next 20 years, you know, as we flesh out the master plan. So, that's what the request is before you today.
You want to make a motion?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to accept Brown and Caldwell's recommendation to use the CRTPO population data, augment it with towns' planning data, as presented at the July 7, 2021 workshop as the basis for developing population projections and the comprehensive water and wastewater matter master plan update.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I have to step back now because I should have brought up the consent agenda, motion to accept consent agenda. And I'll make that motion to accept our consent agenda. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Apologize for that. You going?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I need to be asked, to be recused from being involved with item number 37.
Okay. All in favor of allowing him to be recused?
Recusing.
Okay. Thank you, Dennis. Item 37 is Emergency Rental Assistance Program, ERA 2, funding. Even as the American economy continues to recover from the devastating impact of the pandemic, millions of Americans face rental debt and fear of evictions and the loss of basic housing security. COVID-19 has exacerbated an affordable housing crisis that predated the pandemic and was, has exacerbated deep disparities that threaten the strength of the economic recovery that must, everyone must.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yes, this item is asking you to approve a special revenue ordinance 62 for ERA 2 funding in the amount of $2.289,720 to appropriate funding for the emergency rental assistance program. You will recall that we had received $7.23 million from the first round of funding and another $5.7 million from the second round of funding. And so, this action will just add that to that program. And just for your awareness, and for those who are here and those who are watching the meeting, to date, we have assisted 166 families with an approval of $683,433 in rental assistance and utility assistance. And this program will actually run through year 2025. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Dennis, you can come back. Number 38, the step four we've already addressed, and also the adoption of the ordinance for removal and demolition, number 39. Next, we have number 40, local food presentation. Jessica?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all this evening. My name is Jessica Honeycutt, and I am here today to talk to you about the Local Foods Initiative. I am with the Union County Cooperative Extension, and I'm the local foods coordinator. So, to give you a little history about local foods in Union County, we have to start with the Union County farmer's market. So, this came about in the mid-'80s thanks to a USDA grant that was facilitated by Union County Cooperative Extension. This market quickly grew in popularity, but over the years, it began to decline a little bit. We had some decrease in interest in the last 10 years despite the demand for local foods. I was hired in the fall of 2019, and the first task given to me at hand was to revive this market. You can see, we were in a declining state. We had a decrease in active farmers in a customer traffic, which led to a decrease overall and generated revenue for the county. Fast forward to now, we've had a tremendous amount of growth. We have increased our farmers' daily transactions and even our customer traffic. But even though during the pandemic, we were able to overcome obstacles to continue to thrive and support the demand for local foods in our community. But despite the amount of growth that we generated, we were still only reaching a very small population of our county. We only had one central location. We were open one to two days a week, allowing four to five hours of shopping. So, we obviously knew that we needed to expand, but the question here was how? So, we created a partnership with Wingate University. We began conducting surveys to the local residents of Union County. We surveyed consumers of the Union County and Waxhaw farmer's market. We surveyed and reached out to the public via social media, email, and in public locations. With the data that we, that we collected from Wingate, we were able to get a better understanding of the challenges that we were facing. And we found that there were three things necessary for us to continue to grow. That was more convenient locations, more convenient hours, and a increase in product So, we came up with a selection of opportunities to facilitate connecting our local farmers to the local residents. We created some virtual options, the first one being the Union County Local Foods website. This website was built to highlight the, and create awareness of the farms and businesses that we have here in Union County. This was in an effort to encourage the local residents to shop local farmers. One thing we really like about this website is that it gives the opportunity for local residents to connect with farmers on a more personal level through the videos that our local foods team has created. Our second virtual option that we worked with was facilitated through the North Carolina Department of Agriculture. This is a statewide initiative. And the purpose of this app called the Visit NC Farms app is to create more of an outreach to surrounding areas and highlight our local producers, agritourism in our county, and local businesses. With both the Union County Local Foods website and the Visit NC Farms app, we are able to reach a much wider population and promote the local foods and businesses that we have here in Union County. Another partnership with Wingate University, Monroe Union County Economic Development and local nonprofits is the Union County Food Council. We saw a need to come together and create more public awareness on ways to create a more sustainable food system here in Union County. So, the Union County Food Council focuses on educating the public, networking, and also advocating for local foods. We also expanded our farmer's market locations. We were able to create more convenience for our residents through a partnership with Stallings Parks and Recreation. With this partnership, we were able to reach the western portion of the county, which encourages these folks to shop Union County farmer's markets. Beyond our market expansion, we began connecting local producers with local restaurants through the Union County Food Hub. So, through the Food Hub, we are able to really change the way that restaurants are doing business. Through purchasing ingredients, we are able to provide a fresher, unique, and overall better quality product for the community. And the value of this connection is that we are able to keep more, more money into Union County. So, as you can see, through these projects, we have successfully started to fulfill the needs of our local community. We have increased our locations, and therefore, it's increasing the hours and for, in days of operation. And this is increasing the product selection, such as fresh-cut flowers, gourmet mushrooms, and organic options. Through these expansions, though, we have successfully started to increase the process of connecting our local farmers to local residents. Our county's population is continuing to grow, though, and therefore, we are seeing more opportunity for local foods expansion. Through our partnership with Monroe Union County Economic Development, we can continue to grow on an urban scale, but we can also provide fresh, locally grown fruits and vegetables due to our continued economic agricultural development.
Good evening, Chairman Helms, Commissioners, and Manager Watson. And thank you, Jessica, for introducing our Food Systems Initiative. The last time I was here, it was in December, where I was serving as a local foods intern for Union County Cooperative Extension, where I had shared our efforts with the Visit NC Farms app and the local foods and products website. Now, I'm working with Chris Platae at Monroe Union County Economic Development as a new projects manager and marketing coordinator. With my effort, or with my experience working with agriculture through my studies at NC State University and my experience and internship with Union County Cooperative Extension, we are excited to expand our efforts on agribusiness, as it has always been one of our four tenets of the Economic Development Work Plan. By integrating our efforts with Union County Cooperative Extension, we're hoping to give agribusiness a more holistic view, and we are calling this project the Food Systems Initiative. Over the past month, they've kept me very busy, and we have been building our knowledge base by visiting various geographically different food system program leaders in North Carolina. Our first visit was organized by Manager Watson at NCRC and North Carolina Food Innovation Lab. Here, we were able to tour a state-of-the-art processing and research and production facility with a partnership with North Carolina State University. The following week, we took a trip to Orange County, where we met with the agriculture economic developer, developer, who showed us Weaver Street Market and Piedmont Food Processing Center. Their unique and strong relationship provided, provides a streamline between their opportunities offered to small agribusiness operations by having a commercial kitchen and cold storage. Next, we traveled to Henderson County, where we met with the partnership, the county's Economic Development Office, and AgHC, who both work to build agribusiness and agritourism in their county. That afternoon, we took a trip to Buncombe County as well to tour Blue Ridge Food Ventures, another processing facility for value-added goods. We are continuing to build our knowledge base through creating relationships and attending events such as Snackspo, an upcoming trade show featuring snack goods and related manufacturing in Charlotte, North Carolina. Throughout our trips and conversations, we kept hearing common needs. The need for cold storage, processing centers for co-packing, bottling services, dry storage, and commercial kitchens, growing our, our relationships with educational partners, and other relationships throughout their communities. Here, we learned the importance of having a fully integrated system and the value of having a synergistic connection between Union County Cooperative Extension and economic development. We found there is a need for a physical processing center and a commercial kitchen, as well as a need for substantial cold storage space, all of which is a justification for a dedicated food industrial park in Union County. We also need to enhance our relationships with our fellow community partners, such as Union County Public School System, South Piedmont Community College, Wingate University, North Carolina State University, our healthcare system, existing industries, restaurants, grocery, nonprofits, and of course, our producers and growers. Now, if there's any questions or comments for myself or Jessica?
Commissioner Ray.
Well, thank you, Rachel, for that presentation, and Jessica for that information, and Andrew for all you do as chairman. It's been a long time, but I remember what it's like to be young and have all this energy. And, and I, I want to give kudos to Commissioner Simpson. He has vast knowledge, and I see Jessica, you and Rachel just making this happen. And it is part of economic development, but nobody really thinks about it. So, I'm just so proud of all that Ag Extension does. Ag Extension brought us Cherry, although he was from Union County before.
We found there is a need for a physical processing center and a commercial kitchen, as well as a need for substantial cold storage space, all of which is a justification for a dedicated food industrial park in Union County. We also need to enhance our relationships with our fellow community partners, such as Union County Public School System, South Piedmont Community College, Wingate University, North Carolina State University, our healthcare system, existing industries, restaurants, grocery, nonprofits, and of course, our producers and growers. Now, if there's any questions or comments for myself or Jessica?
Commissioner Ray.
Well, thank you, Rachel, for that presentation, and Jessica for that information, and Andrew for all you do as chairman. It's been a long time, but I remember what it's like to be young and have all this energy. And I want to give kudos to Commissioner Simpson. He has vast knowledge, and I see Jessica, you, and Rachel just making this happen. And it is part of economic development, but nobody really thinks about it. So, I'm just so proud of all that Ag Extension does. Ag Extension brought us Cherry, although he was from Union County before. And this is just so exciting to see young people go off to NC State and then come back and work on something like this.
Thank you.
I'll tell you that I've had the opportunity to go to the Innovation Lab twice. This last time was a team with the president of South Piedmont, president of Wingate College, and they were excited. They're looking at opportunities that's going to help grow this county and make food more readily available, better-quality food than normal. And I know that both of you are working very diligently with that, and I appreciate it. And we look forward to working with you and helping that come fruition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, the next item is progress building renovation?
Yes, sir. So, I'm going to introduce this. Chris Boyd is going to come up here and give you the sort of, you know, some background on the progress building. But before that, he is going to talk to you about some of the challenges that we are facing with the market conditions for building and construction. Understand that we are seeing increases in the time it takes to get materials and certainly increases in the cost of construction. So, Chris has got a little synopsis of what we're seeing, and then he's going to also go into the progress building renovation from there.
Well, good evening, Commissioners and County Manager Watson. As part of this request for the board to consider award and approval of the progress building Phase II construction contract, we felt it important to have a discussion about those market conditions because they did have a direct impact on this project. And we, even just as important, we anticipate that there are going to be impacts to our fiscal year 2022 CIP projects that we're going to start execution shortly. So, we anticipate that we're going to see some issues with the construction market as we move forward. So, I've got a brief presentation. There is a hard copy of the presentation if you want to follow through that. I want to touch briefly on material costs and escalation of those costs, increased delivery lead times, talk about some of the project impacts that we've seen to date, talk about some of our strategies and solutions as we're moving forward to position the county in the best possible way in the market. And then, more specifically, we can talk a little bit about the progress building project and the impact of the market conditions on that project. And then finally, request that the board consider this item as we move forward. I do want to add that as part of the request, the total budget amount includes CPO, a transfer of funds through a CPO that's included in Beverly's presentation of the adoption of CPOs moving forward. So, first off, let's talk a little bit about material costs. I think everyone's aware that there's some inflation in play. That's doubly so in the construction market because it's been hit with not just material cost increases, but also supply chain issues. I won't go through every one of the numbers up here, but needless to say, if you pull out like steel mill products in quarter one, there was a 38% increase. And just in the month of April, an 18% increase in steel mill products. So, that's significant, that we use a lot of steel in all our projects. We don't use a lot of wood in our projects, but we use a lot of steel.
This is in addition, April's in addition to what it did in...
That's right.
So, it's a summation of the two, okay?
Yeah, that's right. And one of my comments in a little bit later in the slide was that all the evidence suggests that May and June are going to be equivalent to the increases seen in April. So, we're talking about a pretty significant issue that we're having to deal with and try to develop some solutions as we're moving forward. Another side of the equation are lead times. And so, one of the biggest issues we faced on some of our projects, and I'll talk about it, is the current delivery lead time for steel roof joists. And right now, they're 10 to 12 months once a contractor places an order. They typically are three to four months. Now, the issue is that roof joists are early in a construction project. So, it forces on a hard-bid job to delay construction start by about six months. So, it's a significant impact to the project. And we've got a few ideas that we are going to try to employ as we're moving forward with some of our other projects. So, what are some of those impacts? Recently, we were notified by our design team and estimator that these steel roof joists were 10 to 12 months out and to expect higher bids than originally predicted. I'll talk about some of the solutions to these in the next slide. Our Board of Elections were notified by the GC that open web steel roof joists were eight to 10 months. So, it's pretty consistent across contractors. The Ag Center, we had a smaller HVAC control replacement job, but it exceeded the budget by 93%. We were also working through the jail alternate water source and generator project. And that project, after actually reducing scope a little bit, still exceeded budget by about 35%. In the progress building, which is on the agenda tonight for approval, the bids exceeded the budget by 83%, which is incredibly significant to our overall CIP plan, which we'll talk about, too. And all indicators right now are pointing to the fact that this escalation is going to continue. There is some lighted end tunnel in delivery times as they think the supply chain is starting to catch up a little bit. But they still think that's a 12-month cycle until it kind of gets back to normal. So, what are some strategies and solutions? In the last, in a previous board meeting, you approved us to move delivery of the Southwest Library to a CM at risk, which allows us to address these time-delay issues with the steel roof joists. It also allows us to get a CM onboard to start looking at some alternate design ideas that may result in some cost savings. On the Board of Elections, we're actually leveraging the progress building storage capacity to allow the contractors to order supplies and materials early and store those in that warehouse in order to get paid, so we can consider it onsite storage. We're also changing the roof structure design from those open webs to solid steel beams. It's costing us 20 grand, but it reduces that delay time because solid steel beams are kind of in a normal timeframe, right? Delivery timeframe. Now, our overall strategy is that we still want to stay within our overall approved CIP budget. And so, how do we do that? Right now, we're, we think the best approach to that is delaying the start and/or deferring some of the lowest priority projects on that list. In the next slide, I'll show you a little bit about what those projects look like and which ones are, I'm going to say, the lowest priority. All of them are high priority, but, or else they wouldn't have been funded this year, but they are the lowest priority within those approved projects. So, the progress building project, if you want to take a look at what our revenues are to that project, so we had about a little over half a million left in that capital fund when we purchased the facility. Economic Development's planning on contributing $240,000. And then I mentioned the CPO 288 transfer of $675,000. We'll move over in just a minute to have a discussion on the CIP project list, and you'll see which project that impacts. When you look at expenses, the construction bid's a little over a million. Owner reserves at $100,000. Phase one costs, which were, you know, kind of moving facilities over, we spent about $132,000 over there. With a total project cost of 1.3, that leaves us an available project balance of a little over $100,000 once we do that $675,000 transfer. So, I mentioned that, you know, we see delayed start and/or deferment of some of these projects as one of the solutions for dealing with this issue once we face those. If you look over to the right-hand side of that, you'll see our fiscal year '22 CIP list of projects that are major capital and our critical infrastructure projects. You'll see a column over to the right that it's a one through five. Those are our lowest-scoring priority projects. And so, logically, we're going to approach it. And it's our intent to approach it that we're going to defer and/or delay start the lowest-scoring projects to start with. So, if you look over number one on the list, the lowest score is the Government Center Upgrade Building Controls. And so, that's the 675 that we're moving over from the CPO 288, if you so approve later in Beverly's presentation. And we would move, our recommendation is that we delay start number two, see where we are, reevaluate, and then see if we need to either defer or delay another project. But our overall goal is to stay within that total budget that you approved last month. So, with that, that moves us to the board action to approve or authorize the county manager to award and approve the bid and execute that contract with SSI II in the amount of $1,076,551,000 for the progress building renovation project pending legal review. So, I'll open it up for questions and any discussion that you want to have.
Yes, I understand that that building, what we purchased for that, that we couldn't even build a like pad on a new building for what we paid for.
Absolutely. There's no way.
And the thing about it is, it is solutioning a number of constraints we have in other buildings. It's going to have the sheriff's office and emergency services. If there's a situation that needs to be addressed, we're going to have all of them in one place.
Absolutely.
And I find that very, very helpful. We do need to get Chris's hot tub out.
That's Jeff's hot tub.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, that's Jeff's hot tub. I'd be happy to share the departments that are planning to go in there if you, if you want.
Why don't you? Because it's quite extensive.
It is. And so, we are going to house a significant amount of storage for the sheriff's office. We currently have already relocated, I'm going to say, most of emergency management supplies, all their trailers, all their response materials, all those things, over into the building. As part of the renovation, we're going to make improvements that allow us to relocate transportation and their vans and vans, buses, over into the larger side of the warehouse. We'll also be relocating their administrative offices into the first floor of the office portion. We'll also, hopefully by January, December, January, February, move Economic Development over into the second floor of the office portion. And so, there's, and as I said, we've, we're going to leverage. Right now, we're planning to leverage some of the storage capacity to help mitigate some of the issues that we're seeing here.
And Chris, we currently have all of our facilities, project managers, administration, and all of our maintenance technicians housed out of that facility, along with all the backstock for all the different trades. So, all of those materials are located in one space, can be managed for inventory purposes, et cetera. Makes for a much better planning space, I would say.
Absolutely. And we're also moving surplus operations over into that, which frees up that existing building for our radio shop install renovation. That's part of our CIP this year.
And the majority of this is under roof, right?
I couldn't hear you.
It's under roof.
It's under roof.
Yep. Commissioner Williams?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris, this sounds like pretty thoughtful planning. With all due respect to our Federal Reserve Chairman and Treasury Secretary, this sounds like pretty thoughtful planning in an environment of not-so-transitory inflation.
Yeah, thank you.
And I'm really glad to have you bring this discussion to us because in this kind of environment, we need to be thinking about just how do we manage capital expenses in an inflationary environment? I mean, we all have seen what, you know, materials costs are and equipment costs are. And I think, you know, some of the solutions that you've put forward make a lot of sense. You know, the timing of these projects, you know, looking more at construction manager at-risk projects, looking at inventory. I mean, when stuff starts going up in price, it makes sense maybe to, you know, store a little bit more of it. So, in any event, I didn't really have a question. I just wanted to say job well done for, you know, addressing this in a very timely way.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and approve the bid and authorize the county manager to execute the contract with SSI II Inc. in the amount of $1,076,551 for the progress building renovation project pending legal review.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, sir. Don't let this rodeo star come and...
That would be my son, not me.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Today, we want to talk about a new process that we're going to start with our capital project ordinance. As you recall, most of you have been on this board for a while, but David, this is new for you. Historically, all capital project ordinance that were for the fiscal year were embedded within the budget ordinance and attached as an attachment. So, you were not really aware of what you were actually appropriating, what the current project costs were, and then what your total appropriation to date was going to be. So, through this new change, you're actually going to be presented actual ordinances that are a Word document instead of an Excel document that you're accustomed to getting. The Excel document will still be attached. So, I don't have a formal presentation, but I wanted to go through the actual Word document with you so you'll understand when we're actually bringing the CPOs to you for adoption, what we're actually asking you for, what's included in the ordinance. So, I've got an example up. This is an ordinance that you'll actually be asked to adopt tonight. This is ordinance 285 for the DOT projects for FY '22. Section one of the ordinance is going to ask you what project you were actually adding the money to. So, this is your expense side. What are we asking you to appropriate? And then, there's going to be a dollar amount in that that you'll be able to read, as well as the scope, as what the money will actually be spent on. This particular one is for the NC DOT projects for our donation to their construction project cost. Section two of the ordinance is going to tell you what your revenue sources are. Where's your money coming from? So, that gives you a clear indication, a more transparent version of, is it tax dollars, is it bond money, is it donations, is it grants? Section three will tell you to see the attached CPO, the Excel version that you're accustomed to seeing. It's going to show your total appropriation to date by project, any additions that we're adding to that, and the total appropriation amount by project. Section five is some language that authorizes me as the Finance Director from time to time to transfer loans from the general fund to any CIP funds. If you recall, when you said you agreed to fund the design for Forest Hills High School and East Elementary School, that would be a future bond project. During that time, you also authorized a temporary loan from the general fund to their CIP fund to fund that. The intent behind that is then to further reimburse the county that cost once the bonds are issued. So, this section takes care of authorizing that intent to reimburse, which is required by the IRS for any bonds that we issue. And then, the last section is just the effective date. And so, each one of these, we would ask the chairman to sign as part of the new process. To go over the attachment, so you're familiar with what you're actually looking at. To go over the attachment, so you're familiar with what you're actually looking at, let's see if I can make this a little bit bigger. So the first section on this is the summary, your summary of sources and your summary of uses. On the left side, your summary is always going to be your revenue sources. On the right side is always going to be your project cost. If you look further down in the attachment, in the middle is going to be your account detail. This breaks down all the revenue by source, by account number, and on the right side, for the uses, it tells you what we're actually spending it on. So I'll stop and ask if you have any questions about the actual document.
Commissioner, break.
Beverly, I do, on the $100,000 for DOT, which is a state agency, which is controlled by the Governor, if we didn't fund this, what would it do?
I would defer that question to Brian, if we didn't fund these projects.
So these are commitments that the county has made in the past for cost shares? So if you didn't fund it, we would not be meeting our commitment to the cost share?
Well, what about the commitments that the state has made to our school system for the last three years, and they haven't passed a budget?
I have a question. When do we give this money to the state? Because they have a history of promising to do something. They'll take the money, and then it doesn't happen. Ask Indiana Trail.
So these funds are, we actually only give these funds when the project is actually ready for construction, that's when we give these funds. They make a request for it, and then they actually pay it back.
Well, can we do it when it's completed?
I don't want to be in any bad minding, I'm not sure.
Let's find out. Brian, these are, if I'm not mistaken, these are part of the Critical Intersection projects that were studied and then approved, like individual projects?
I appreciate that. Yes, sir, that's exactly what they are. So if you'll recall, the Board, we adopted a Critical Interception program. We identified projects in the county, had high-score ratings for safety, different factors. And then in order to help facilitate those projects being done quicker, the Board agreed to have some matching funds, some cost share. That was a total, I believe, of a half a million dollars. You've done essentially $100,000 every year, and I think this is the last year of the program, if I'm not mistaken. It's been a successful program. We've been able to get intersections improved because of it. But I do understand your concern. Obviously, it is a state agency, but currently, the way the funds are used is as cost share.
Well, one other thing, Mr. Matthews, as you know, there's a lot of talk about, why don't we do something about the roads? But they're not in our purview of funding. This is one, you know, I served on CARPO last year, Commissioner Williams is on it this year. It's a wasted time. We're outvoted, outnumbered, and we can't get anything done. Now, I don't want to hurt the county or the Critical Intersections, but if enough people start sending a message, we're not going to pay our part till you step up the plate and do what you're supposed to do.
I don't know how to answer that, but I can tell you that it's unfortunate that at CARPO, we are likely not going to get the level of funding that other jurisdictions do. This was seen as an opportunity to bring small projects in. I mean, that's what this was. We knew that we could leverage this money to get small projects, and that's what it's been successful in doing. It's really the Board's pleasure. I understand your concern.
Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I think all of us up here are, we're all critics of NC DOT, to be sure. But just to pivot off of what Mr. Matthews has said, I have to acknowledge, when it comes to the Critical Infrastructure Project, it has been pretty successful. I think one of the reasons we were doing multiple iterations of it is because we saw the first iteration work pretty well. And to our pleasant surprise, the state came back and basically confirmed, granted most of our requests, or half of our requests, and then funded and helped complete them. So again, I'm definitely a critic of NC DOT, but when it comes to the Critical Infrastructures Project, I think, you know, they've done pretty well by us.
So if you don't have any further questions on the actual ordinance itself, I'm just use this as an example. The following capital project groups, we presented to you on the, at the June 3 meeting. Prior to that, Chris Boyd actually did a presentation as well on all the general capital project requests that would be coming before you for FY '22. Also tonight, you have the Union County Public Schools FY '22 Capital Project Request and one of the CPOs for adoption, as well as the Solid Waste, Union County Landfill Expansion of the CND Sales, the FY '22 appropriation for that amount. I didn't plan to go into detail for all those projects, because you've already been presented those a couple of times. But if you have any specific questions about each CPO and the projects, Chris is still here to help answer any questions, and I'll be glad to help answer any questions also before you take action.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion. Commissioner Williams convinced me, I don't want to be on the wrong side of a Critical Intersection funding, but it's just unfortunate, but I will make the motion to approve these ordinances.
Do you need an action?
Read each one of them all.
I know that as you read out all seven of them.
I make a motion to adopt CPO number 283 for annual operating R and R. Number two, adopt CPO 284 for Critical Infrastructures. Adopt CPO 285 for NC DOT Projects. Adopt CPO 286 for Public Safety Projects. Adopt CPO 287 for Solid Waste Projects. Adopt CPO 288 for Major Infrastructure Projects. And adopt CPO 289 for UCPS Fiscal Year 2022 Capital Projects.
Okay, we have a motion, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Beverly. Appointments to Boards and Committee, Agricultural Advisory Board, the terms of Gerald Magnum, James H. Howey, and Stephen Hegler on the Agricultural Advisory Board expired in June 2021. These individuals have applied for reappointment. No additional applications were received.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Motion to reappoint Mr. Gerald Magnum, Mr. James Howey, and Mr. Steve Hegler to the Agricultural Advisory Board.
Okay, we have a motion, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, JCPC, terms of the following members that expired on June 30, 2021. Rachel Patterson, substance abuse professional. Matty O. Woods, person under age 18. Christopher Westover, Commissioner appointee. Anne Marie Woods, Commissioner appointee. And Angie Horn. These individuals have applied for reappointment. No additional applications were received.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Motion to reappoint Rachel Patton, Matty O. Woods, Christopher Westover, Anne Marie Woods, and Angie Horn.
Okay. We have a motion, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Our next one was item that was added, now, discussion regarding social media posts referencing fellow elected officials drowning in debt. I think I need to read why we're addressing this, and it's Commissioner Rush made a statement to Mr. Davis. But I have mortgages since I bought my first house at 23. As elected official, I would worry about fellow elected officials drowning in debt. They may be more likely to be bought off. I think this was a point of a voter who asked to see our credit scores. I find that very offensive, and it's painted with a very broad brush, doesn't identify anybody. So Commissioner Rush, if you'd tell us who has this debt that you're so concerned about?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd be glad to talk to you about this. One of our constituents, a citizen of Union County, had challenged me to produce a credit report at one time. And I was going through my credit report and saw my score was 811, extremely proud of that, and I posted that on Facebook. And Mr. Davis, who is a citizen of Montgomery County, not Union County, he's a politician, had ran for office in Montgomery County, not Union County. He was saying, well, why is that important? Why do you think that's important? And I said, because an elected official who would be drowning in debt could be more of an issue. Now, to my knowledge, every Commissioner up here, Commissioner Simpson, never known him to be in debt or spending money that he didn't have. Commissioner Williams is an attorney, I'm sure he's doing quite fine. To all my knowledge, Commissioner Ray, you're wealthy. You, you know, a lot of people told me you're well-off. And I know that I've been to your house, and I doubt that you are drowning in debt. Mr. Chairman. So the question is, while I was dealing with the death of my uncle, we had a discussion about why this lady would have thought it was important to see elected officials' credit score. That's why it's vague, because it's vague. It's a discussion that I'm sure many of us have had about President Joe Biden, his son, Barack Obama, and whoever else that we might not have agreed with at one time, about somebody being credible, not credible, having money issues, or anything else. I would suggest to each of my fellow Commissioners, and the reason I like Jerry Simpson so much is Jerry never comes to me and says, hey, I didn't like that post you put out. Jerry don't care. He don't pay attention to them, and he don't let them get under his skin. Jerry don't, it don't bother Jerry. Bother you, Jerry, anything I write?
Yes.
He never challenges me.
I don't read it.
He don't read it. He don't read it. And I would suggest that you guys, y'all mention my social media posts every meeting. Commissioner Williams, you, your election to this office, your signing up for office resulted from posts that I was making about monies being spent in public works.
Well, I think I did a good bit of campaigning on my own.
You did. You absolutely did. But you signed up because of information that I put in public works. Commissioner Ray, you've benefited in the past from my social media posts. You have benefited politically. I got a picture of me and you, me in a Boss Hogg suit and you in a straw hat.
Right. But you also apologized to your friends after I voted for Yadkin for asking them to vote for me.
Yeah, I did. I did. Because, because, you know, I convinced a lot of people that you were absolutely for putting water in this county, and you went, and listen, Jeff Canton's here, he's spending his time. Jeff, you don't want to sit here and listen to them politic, do you? You'd rather go home, right? So this is not the place to sit and politic. If you guys want to politic, challenge me on Facebook. Challenge me on social media where y'all are complaining. I would suggest to you, block me, because evidently, you ever hear the story of you, there's an old saying, if you throw a rock in a pig, a pen of pigs, the one you hit squeals the louse. I ain't throwing a rock at any of you guys, but y'all are sitting here taking up county resource time to sit here and chastise me for something that I'm having a discussion from somebody from Montgomery County that has got me in a conversation about why is it important that an elected official have a good credit score?
Well, you said fellow elected officials.
Okay, there are fellow elected officials all over Union County.
Yeah, but there's only four, there's only five.
I didn't not say Union County Board of County Commissioners.
Well, you have a ability to say something and it not be untrue, but it paints a broad brush.
The reason it paints a broad brush, because it was a broad topic. And again, if it gets under your skin, I can't help that. I can't change the way you feel about what somebody else says. I can't change that, and I can't, the guy was asking me a question. You know, the manager reached out to me, said, you know, Stony, you probably need to reach out to your fellow Commissioners, have a little discussion with them, and talk to them a little bit more. And you know, I said, that's a good idea. So I called Commissioner Williams a couple of times today, tried to reach out to him. He had reached out to me about having lunch, and I said, that's a good idea, so I really want to do that. Now, my uncle passed away, and I had a funeral and all that good stuff that happened last week. So the manager, I took his recommendation, the assistant manager, asked me today to keep something to myself, and I kept it to myself. I did share it with Commissioner Williams, and I was going to share it with you and Chairman Hams and Commissioner Simpson. It's a concern I have. But it's not a concern that needs to be aired publicly.
Well, the problem is, when things go down four-one, you try to discredit the four, and you personally told me you know more than we do about public water.
No, no, no. What, let me explain something. When I first came into office in 2014, Chairman Hams was the one, and I watched him, and the four had their way, and Chairman Hams, I said, that ain't really fair, that Chairman Hams doesn't seem to have any ability to have input. And Chairman Hams, what did I do when I came in office? I put you in that seat as Chairman, because all of us...
Now, my peers put me in that seat.
And if you remember, I was the one that pushed to put you in that seat, because I felt it was not fair for four people to gang up on one.
Well, but you never heard me...
For you guys to politic...
You never heard me criticize staff or criticize my peers?
Time out. Chairman Hams, if you really want to say you never criticized the former county manager, then I can line a lot of people up to disagree with that.
Oh, I'll have to agree with you. I didn't have problems.
And the Public Works Manager, the past Public Works Manager, if you want to line them up, I can line them up.
But I never attacked...
So that's not the point.
Never attacked.
The point is, the point is, I didn't attack any of you in that post, not one of you. To my knowledge, each of you have outstanding credit and are outstanding businessmen. You're retired, you should have great credit. Commissioner or Vice Chairman Ray, you have businesses, you have buildings, you have properties, you have rentals, you should have outstanding credit. Again, I expect an attorney would have outstanding credit and care about that. And Chairman Simpson...
Careful now. TM, bring it to you.
I assume that he's been putting a nest egg back. So again, I have to apologize for what you perceive that I'm saying, rather than what I'm saying. And I've told Commissioner Ray, in that conversation we had last week after the meeting, I'm not your enemy. I'm not your enemy. And because I have a difference of opinion with you on taxes, on sewer and water rates or whatever, I have that right to sit up here and represent the people that asked me to do that. And I've been consistent, and I telegraph my punches. I tell you months ahead where I stand, and I stand there. And neither, none of you can deny that.
All right, I'm going to tell you something, and I'm going to promise you this. If you don't quit telling lies or half-truths on Facebook, I'm going to start telling the truth about you.
Tell me the lie. Tell me the lie. Tell me the lie. You want me to go and start telling the truth about you?
Tell it.
I will. I'll tell it on Facebook, and that 5,000 people can see it.
Well, you know, what we're saying, if you have disagreement or opinion about one of us, be a man, talk to our face.
I do talk to your face. I do talk to... When's the last time you called me, Mr. Chairman? When's the last time you reached out and telephoned me?
Well, it has been a while, because it's hostile.
That's right. It has been a while.
Yep.
Been a while. Who reached out, who reached out to who last, Dennis? Did I reach out to you, did you reach out to me?
I reached out to you. I sent you a text.
I sent you a call.
And said, can we have a civil conversation?
I sent you a call about the revaluations and revenue neutral. And I sent you a picture of what somebody else was saying and blaming the Board of County Commissioners for tax increases.
Well, then you turned around and blamed all the town councils. Stay in your lane, Stony.
Chairman, Vice Chairman Ray, they're blaming you. They're blaming you for their tax increase, because they didn't change their rate. Now, that's on social media. I don't see you calling that out.
I hadn't seen it anywhere.
I showed it to you. I sent it to you. You asked me to send it to you, I sent it to you. So again, we're politicking up here.
No, you're politicking.
No, I'm not politicking. You put the damn agenda item on. I'm not politicking.
You are...
You put the agenda item on because you have desperately wanted to get at somebody since you were censured on the school board, Vice Chairman Ray.
Oh, now we're jumping around everywhere.
And I'm not the guy.
You are the one under discussion item. I hadn't posted anything about you on Facebook.
Yeah, let me do the discussion I got. I am background checked more than anybody you'll know. I have background checks for FFL license. I have background checks for concealed carry permits. I have background checks for volunteering for the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission and the South Carolina Department of Natural Resources.
All right. Well, tell me one thing that you have done for this board, this county, in 10 years of service.
Well, if I wasn't here, I'd hate to see what the tax rate might be. How you like that?
That's a good soundbite for.
Good soundbite.
For running a campaign.
You guys honestly need to, you guys honestly need to block me on social media. If you can't, if you don't like what I say on social media, you know, when we get in here and have our meetings, I ask the staff, is that, am I right about this? And if I'm right, they say I'm right. If I'm wrong, they say, well, no, you're not right about that. And I take that advice under consideration. But again, you put an item on the agenda to chastise a commissioner in public in front of candidates. I see a couple of candidates out there in the crowd. So I guess, I guess they can take this and go to their people and say, well, look here. I may not even run. I may not even run. I may run for a different office. It's not about politics, and you guys got to understand, to stop using taxpayer money to try to buy votes.
We're not.
And you got to learn to stop using taxpayer money to chastise somebody in front of these cameras to make a little political commercial for yourself.
Stony, I want to say one more thing. You said you're not my enemy. If you're not my, if you're my friend, I don't need enemies, because you.
Okay. I think, I think we beat this dead horse enough.
I think we beat it to death, yeah.
So next, we'll have county manager come.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, just one thing to bring to your attention. On June the 22nd, this week, we have the opening ribbon cutting for the event center at Jesse Helms Park. That's, that is at 5:30. It's an invitation event. We have a number of dignitaries coming in from across the state, representing the Department of Agriculture, NC State University. I believe we have a congressman may be with us. So there'll be a number of folks there to help celebrate that event. That opening celebration will continue Friday and Saturday, culminating with a band at the event center on Saturday evening and final fireworks shows. But there'll be activities on Friday and Saturday for children and adults alike, including, I believe, a touch of truck event. So if you have small ones that, you know, like to see dump trucks and tractors and the like, they'll all be out there for them to crawl on and sit in a seat and blow the horn and such as that and have a big time. So we all look forward to that. And I want to say a special thank you for all the staff that has spent many, many hours putting that event together. We appreciate your hard work on that. With that, thank you and have a good evening.
Commissioner Simpson?
No comment.
Commissioner Rush?
No comment.
Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to respond briefly to some of the speakers during the informal comments period. I don't think they're still here, but perhaps they'll be able to, to watch this later. First of all, I want to acknowledge them. Brian Helms, I believe, Richard Daunt, Jessica Cook, Deb Helms. I want to applaud them for their engagement in, you know, in the arena and the public arena. I think it's very important, whatever side of an issue that you're on. I think I've met and broken bread with two or three of these folks and corresponded with them. But anyway, I just first want to acknowledge how important it is for, for anybody, and these folks especially, to come here today and engage on issues in the public arena. I think that's great. But I'd also like to address some of the items they brought up, because I think they're important in terms of the recent 1.7% property tax increase, where those funds went. I'm one of the four that voted for it, and I don't have any regrets about that. I would still make the same decision today, and I consider myself a low-tax conservative. Let me just summarize where this went to. The 3.6 million that was raised, all of it and then some, all of it and then some, went primarily to our education partners. Went to the Union County Public Schools, about 5.5 million, almost 400,000, to South Piedmont Community College. So this is not a story of county government gone wild. This went to fund our education partners. One of the speakers, I forget who, had mentioned that in terms of Union County Public Schools, they're top three in the state in terms of ranking, but they are dead last, 116 out of 116 county and municipal school systems in terms of state per pupil funding. When I found that, I nearly fell out on my chair. You know, but our school board has done an admirable job, you know, doing a lot with less. And I've become convinced that they needed the money. Now, when you look at opportunities for cutting funds and areas where you need to expend more funds, it's really pretty simple. When you look at the county budget and you take out the enterprise fund, you take out water and sewer, what are the major items of expenditure? Well, number one that just hits you in the head like a two-by-four is education. That's where most of our county dollars go, and that's where the need is. You know, our Union County Public Schools spends 2,500 to $3,000 less than, you know, median school systems in the top 10 in the state. So they are doing a bang-up job, in my view, with managing the operation side of that budget. What are other big items? Public safety is the next big one. Well, to Sheriff Kathy's credit, back in, I think it was not just the last fiscal cycle, but the fiscal cycle before that, 2020, Sheriff Kathy had some needs that he wanted, that, some asks of the County Board of County Commissioners. And to his credit, he waited on those. He deferred on those. And then COVID happened, fiscal year 2021. What did Sheriff Kathy do? To his credit, he deferred again. He said, you know what? I understand this is a difficult period. I'm going to wait yet again on these needs. So what did we do in fiscal, staring at fiscal year 2022, when things are looking a little more clear, and Sheriff Kathy has waited nearly two years to fund some of these needs? We went ahead and funded these needs. Was that a mistake? I don't think so. So you move on right down the list. What's another next big budget item? I think it's probably number three, benefits. You know, you've got post-employee benefits, which is a substantial expenditure, and you've got benefits from medical and dental. You know, those premiums, we know, we know what's happening there to healthcare costs and healthcare premiums. What's the decision there? Do we just say, you know what, county employees, you eat all of that premium increase? Is that our answer? Is that the responsible, the good thing to do? I don't think so. You know, we had a holiday in terms of post-employee benefit funding last year, and that holiday, I think, made some sense. You know, we were looking at COVID, and so we delayed some of the funding of those very necessary contributions so we can meet our obligations to employees, post-employee, retired employees. Well, this year, we caught up on some of that funding. I think that was an appropriate decision. So you look at the big areas, you know, that the county funds, and there were needs there that we had to meet. And, you know, I think ultimately, perspective matters, too. I hate tax increases. I loathe them. You know, before I was in this job, this is my first job ever as an elected official, I was an activist, you know, fighting for lower taxes. I still believe in lower taxes. We compare pretty well, by the way. You look at Gaston County, you look at Cabarrus County, you look at Mecklenburg County. We compare favorably to all of those. And a couple of those counties are pretty conservative. So I don't want to abuse the privilege here. I know this is commissioners' comments, and I probably have. But I felt like it was important to address some of those points. And, you know, thank you for your indulgence, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Ray?
I would just like to congratulate Commissioner Williams. He speaks so eloquently, and that's all.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I appreciate those that came tonight. I'll say that I think Commissioner Williams, he's been with us seven months now, and he's figured it out. You know, it's not a campaign thing. This is not a job that you campaigned, try to appeal to people. But we've got, we've got items that we need to take care of. And Sheriff's Department, you know, that was challenged. But Sheriff's Department, out of nine people, I think five of them, Indian Trail paid for. But they had needs. And so we need to continue on. We've got this, this event center, I see it as a huge economic development opportunity because, and Jerry, correct me if I'm wrong, but right now, you have to go multiple counties out of the way to utilize a stock sale or rodeo or things like that. Is that a fair statement?
Sure.
And so we can keep that revenue here in the county. Andrew and his staff have worked hard. Our Parks and Rec have worked very hard and got a partnership that we all should be proud of, and we're looking forward to it. There's a lot of people in Western Union County that don't know where Monroe is. You got a reason to come now, because we're a very large equestrian community. And you've got a place that you can come to shows, horse shows, livestock shows, that will help our county grow and grow reasonably and sensibly. So I, I have to commend, commend our staff for making this come to fruition. So with that, I'll make.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, I have a question about tonight. Lynn, all the votes tonight, were they unanimous?
I would need to go back and check each one.
Yeah, please provide that with the board.
All right. With that, I'll make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.